We'll make it. Where on the agenda we have planning board, under Planning Board Business and Policies, release of surety for South Shore Millworks and Larson Farms, reported planning and economic director, development director, minutes to approve, bills and warrants to approve, discussion on a modification request for a special permit on 60 West Main Street for O'Reilly Auto Parts, formally approved as Garrett Shops. And then that's at 7:20. 7:30 is a discussion with representatives on the Clap Street Solar Project. Why don't we start with the release of surety for, I see a gentleman from South Shore Millworks is here. Is it Mr. Barton? Burton, I'm sorry.
There is an email attached to, under A, from Jeff Burton, who can come up. There was a question about rock piles and earth piles. So when Brian Butler and I visited the site, there are still the appearance of earth storage onsite and the surety releases for earth removal. So the email that I've received from Jeff, I said if you wouldn't mind coming into the meeting and talking to the board directly in case you had any questions about that surety request, release request. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, I just found it.
Just catch up. So you have possible use for that material on another site?
We're thinking we might grind it at some day, but it's, we might grind it at some day, but it's years away. It's basically if you go out back behind the shop, it's back to the left of the solar field, near the, behind the drainage basin. So it's way, way out of the way. So we're hoping that, I don't know what's going to happen across the street, we own that house across the street. It all depends if we, we might want to go back and have that rezoned residential at some point down the line. I'm not sure if, I don't think it's a non-conforming lot at this point, but it's really low on the backside of that. So we don't know at some point. We didn't want to give it away. I think somebody will take it for free if I, if they would grind it, but right now we're just keeping it there. It's kind of out of the way.
Mostly heavy rock?
Oh, yeah, it's just rock like, yeah, there's not anything anybody can move.
And I'm sorry, where is it located on the property?
It's, you go out back behind the building and halfway up the solar field and over to the left.
So it's not visible from anywhere other than on your property?
Oh, right. You have to go behind the building to see it, drive around, correct?
Right, because there's woods in the back and there's solar.
The trees are growing nicely. The trees that we planted up on the top, they've come along nicely.
Yeah, I could barely tell that they were new.
Any concerns with releasing the surety? If it stays there, is it, is it subject to not so much erosion, but wind, you know, picking it up as dust?
No, there's nothing, there's, there's actually grass all around it. It's been there for like three years now. So hasn't, it's just been sitting there. We haven't removed dirt. The building took two years to build, so we haven't removed anything out of there in over two and a half years. It was actually some, I think somebody thought something was going across the street. We had tops out front.
Right, there was a question, Tim saw that, yeah.
That was actually, oh, that was actually a garage, an elliptical garage we built in the shop that the people couldn't take right away, so it's being covered to be on, go on a truck.
Any other questions or concerns, or you see no issue with the lease of surety even though there's still material there?
That's really, I don't personally. As long as we keep track of it and if they do need another permit, then we can come back.
Oh, right. Okay, we wouldn't remove it.
Any idea how many yards you have there?
I have no clue. Maybe is it 5,000 or something? I don't know.
I guess it's like four dump trucks worth of big, big, big bouldery.
Dump truck at best is 14 yards.
Yeah, it's, it's more than, it's more than that.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't take a real look at it.
Maybe 40.
Forty trucks.
Huh? What's that?
Forty dump yard, dump trucks?
There's quite a bit there. It's a rock pile. It's a rock, but there's no small stuff and there's no dust. It's been there forever. The bank asked me the same question. The bank dentaled the mortgage on that day. They asked me the same question. I explained to them and they were fine with it too.
And I apologize if I missed it, but where do those, what was the purpose of those rocks initially?
Oh, they came from the solar field. So, and some of them dirt removal, but we took a lot away.
Yeah.
And we just, nobody would take them at the time. What happened with us is the dirt removal took five, we started and whenever that special permit came out, it's been, isn't it?
2013.
Okay, five, six years ago, we started removing. We were in the recession and we needed something to do, so we knew we were going to put an addition on, so we started, we went for a permit to remove the soil. And when people had nothing to do, they would remove the soil for free trucking. And, but nobody would take the rocks. So the rocks got piled on the side for a while and then at the end we're just like, well, it's not bothering anything, maybe we'll use it some down the line. And somebody told me today, if I called Borrow or somebody, they, when it's time, I'd just get a permit for them to come over, they'll get their permit and take them away, but I don't know if that's true or not, to grind them up, but right now it wasn't.
So if, when Mr. Burton gets ready to remove them, he needs a permit to do that?
Needs an earth removal.
Yes.
An earth removal, yeah, we would have to give him an earth removal.
I realize that too.
This board?
Yeah, we're the special permit.
And I guess the only other question I have, they're stable, it's not like there's, you know, dirt in there that may get washed away that would loosen a rock that's on top of another one?
Oh, there's no dirt at all in the pile. They were actually, just rocks.
Okay.
How long have the piles been in their current location then?
Three years.
Okay, so it's been a while. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I don't have a kind of motion.
I'll make the motion. We release the, the bond on South Shore Millworks and $22,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And is anyone here from Larson Farms?
Jay Zola will not be here. I did speak to him this morning.
Only that it's 7:20.
Oh, right.
Hold off on that.
Sure.
And then Mr. Cohen?
So this is under number one of your binders. There is material that David provided to me yesterday and I also have the original decision on hand if anyone wants.
You have the easel, Tabitha?
Familiar faces with Mr. Dan and Mr. Beatty. My name's David Cohen, North Resident, I live in Fuller Drive. We are the owners of 60 West Main Street. So to give you a little history, back in 2015 and into 2016, we permitted roughly 10,000 square feet, plus or minus mixed-use building, single-story with a drive-through. Special permit was for the drive-through, inaccessible to 10,000 square feet. I think it was just for that, those two issues. Within the time from the special permit that we had reported to now, we've had limited requests for tenancies. The big, the big drive, the big turnoff is for establishments with the drive-through. There's a limitation to the drive-through where, other than a bank, the drive-through would have to have two windows. You couldn't have any microphones because of the residential behind, which is a seminary way. So we proposed to have two windows, one window where you'd order face-to-face to an employee and then you'd drive up 10, 12 feet and pick up your car. So the retailers that have their business model, the Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks, Canaries like, businesses like that, they, they shied away. They wanted how they wanted. So we have received interest, significant interest from O'Reilly Auto Parts. And end of this week, we'll have a decision from them on whether or not we're going to go ahead and sign a lease. So I had brought the issue to Tabitha and wanted to find out exactly what we need to do to scale back the original special permit. In my review of the town bylaws, I don't think I'd need a special permit for what I'm trying to do. I think it's a byright use where it's a retail automotive store, it'd be about 7,200 square feet. We might need one waiver, a variance, whatever it is for parking, it might be short on one parking spot. But just wanted to give the board a quick update of where the project stands and where it's most likely going to go in the next six months or so.
Now, David, I, as I discussed with you, it would trigger us, so the, David is requesting a modification of the special permit. It, I know there had been some discussion about a new special permit, and the trigger for a special permit is 10,000 square feet or 25 parking spaces.
Okay, so it would be the 25 spaces.
Right. So how many spaces do you have?
Yeah. 13.
Yeah, there's about 30 or 32, there's a couple of spaces, I don't know if those are half-spaces or not on the drawing, but.
So it'd be 25, 32, 39. 39 spaces.
Just so we're clear on that.
Yeah. 15 along the front, 10 on the right, two on the left, and seven.
Do you remember how many parking spaces you had in the original proposal, 52?
Uh, I want to say 52.
Yeah, 50, I just found it, it's 52.
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, we're reducing the footprint from just over 10,000 down to about 7,200 square feet. We're eliminating the drive-through. So it'd basically just be a freestanding retail store, O'Reilly's Auto Parts, just, they just sell parts, they don't do any onsite repairs. It's like an advanced auto or auto zone store like that. Would still have all the other parts of the project, the underground drainage, photometrics, we'll follow that same path.
There's no wetlands.
There's no wetlands. The perimeter of the property remains the same, so the fencing will remain the same. The only thing I'd request is I had to, because of the drive-through, I had to install a 13-foot sound fence in the rear here. I'd like to eliminate that and just carry that eight-foot fence along the rear of the property that's on the other two sides now that the drive-through is, not only is the drive-through eliminated, but the receiving for O'Reilly's is done on the side and it's done by a 10-wheeler or smaller. They don't have, they've got a, they're building a distribution site in Brockton, so they'll be no larger than a 10-wheeler truck, you know, as small as a regular passenger van.
What are the rock rating hours?
Uh, that I don't know. I don't know yet. I can certainly find out. I would think eight to 10 probably.
Okay. And the fence that, the sound barrier fence, you're just going to replace that with a chain link?
Uh, no, I'd do a solid, eight-foot-high solid PVC fence.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that would go along the back line?
Yeah, along the back, the entire rear of the site.
Yeah.
And then we transition a four feet on the left and right side.
Okay.
So I have, I don't know if you're familiar with the original project that we had permitted, try to hold it up here, you know, it was much larger scale. Like I said, it was, it was around, I'm sorry, 12,000 square feet. 12 to, this would be the drive-through side here. So, and what we did is this dark line, I don't know if you can see it from here to here, would have been a 13-foot-high sound fence to buffer this house here from the drive-through window here and here. So the rest of the property is six-foot-tall vinyl clad. It says chain link, but it's going to be, it should say vinyl, solid vinyl on all three And what else was the big sticking point? Size of the building, the drive-through, the butter.
The traffic patterns don't change.
No.
You're going to keep that the same?
Yeah, yeah, for the most part. And I think, yeah, so we'll have in and out here and we'll have in, in and out here. This was limited to a right-hand turn only.
Yeah, so that was one-way around for the, with the drive-through, but now you have two-way traffic all the way around the building.
Yeah.
From a process standpoint, we can ask that this be a brand-new special permit or we can consider it a minor modification. Given the fact that, I mean, the, the original special permit was pretty involved.
Yeah.
And given that, at least from what I've, I've heard and what I see here, everything is, if you will, a step back from, from the original proposal, it would seem to me that minor modification of the original special permit would work. I don't know how you folks feel, but it doesn't, it doesn't look like there's anything that would be, if you will, more concerning with this project than was originally proposed. The, the one thing, and you alluded, alluded to it right off the bat, was the, was the drive-up. That was a, a real issue.
Yeah.
Initially.
Yeah.
And what I would personally want to see, if in fact we're going to do this as a minor modification, that it be understood and stipulated that the, the approved, notwithstanding it was a modified drive-up window, but that modified drive-up window be eliminated as part of the special permit. And the reason I say that, I hope O'Reilly Auto Parts makes a billion dollars and they're here forever, but if, for whatever reason, they decide this isn't working for them.
Yeah.
I don't want personally that special permit with a drive-up to still be out there. And, you know, we've approved something thinking we're going to see one thing, only to find out.
Right.
So again, I'm speaking personally. If that works for you, it works for me.
Yeah, yeah. And then I'm hoping we never have to address it, but when we do, you know, five, 10 years from, we'll deal with it then.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, that approach, to remove that portion from the special permit.
We aren't making a decision tonight, though.
No, I, this is just a discussion. I know the, the other thing that you mentioned was the lighting plan, you know, we'd want to see something just to make sure that we're on board with that. And the only other concern I'd have, only because the, the Finch property is, is used commercially, but I'd like to see some type of fencing for, particularly if cars are going to be able to drive around here, that blocks any lights at night from people driving around and shining into the back of that property. So you mentioned something about a six-foot vinyl fence.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it extend at least up to that parking.
Yeah, no sweat. I mean, I, my intentions were, would have six foot all the way from here to here and then it was going to transition down to four feet where the school traffic is.
Yep.
And basically at the start of the pond would transition to four feet. So this entire, from, from property corner to property corner, inclusive of all this, would be six-foot, solid.
When this went through, previous, did it have stormwater and everything?
Yes, the retention basin was where the stormwater was going to run to. Now the parking area is smaller, so.
We had two. We had a basin and then we had an underground system in the front of the property. It's going away, which will go away as well. So everything, like Mr. Fernandez said, would be scaled back, septic, the drainage. Obviously, we have to redesign it all, but it would be a significant scale better.
If this is a modification, to be clear, then we would apply bylaws that are, that would be active to the previous permit decision. So the new stormwater bylaw would not apply.
Okay.
If that's what you're thinking.
Yeah. What's the difference between?
It's a little bit more stringent.
Mm-hmm.
And you're welcome to explore that.
Okay.
Again, there's no decision tonight, but at least my sense is that people are okay with treating this as a modification to an existing special permit. We'll schedule you for a, a meeting on that whenever you are going to be ready.
We should give them a time, I guess.
Well, I'm going to have a decision Monday, July 2nd.
Okay.
So it goes to.
July 2nd? I believe it's Monday, July 3rd.
July, okay, July 3rd. It goes to O'Reilly's Expansion Committee this Friday and then we're notified the following Monday, so July 3rd. Obviously, if they agree to the lease, then we go forward. If they don't, it's a moot point, everything stays as is.
Okay.
But I'll let you know either way. Hopefully, we're back here showing the new design, showing the new drainage, et cetera. But again, I just, I figured, I was speaking with Tabitha and she had mentioned, come, propose it to the board, it was a new board for the most part, kind of bring you up to speed with what had taken place last year and the year before and what we're trying to do.
Good luck.
Sounds good.
As soon as you're ready, contact Tabitha and we'll try to get you on the earliest agenda we can.
Perfect. All right.
All right. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Best wishes, Mike.
Thank you.
So for Clap Street, the second, number two, I wrote up a little summary for y'all. And there are documents available in hard copy. I have them all right here if you'd like. There is the decision, the landscape plans, the operations and maintenance agreement, planting conditions letter from the planning board, and the correspondence from the Butters.
I see Mr. Chapman. Who else is here from the project or, come on up, please.
Do all three of us come up?
Whoever wants to address the board.
Wheaton, a couple of solar companies.
Hi.
Hi.
Brett Chapman with.
Excuse me one second. Is the mic picked? Does, do you need the mic or?
You're speaking to the.
Okay.
There you go. Thanks. No problem.
So Brett Chapman here with Maximum Solar, representing Norton Solar One and Norton Solar Two on 20 and 36 Clap Street.
All right. Only because I almost feel like I need a program because there's been, there've been some changes. Maximum Solar, are they the current owner?
So we are going to, no, so I am going to be the operations and ma, Maximum Solar is going to be the operations and maintenance provider for this project. And I'd like to introduce David. He represent, he works for the owner, which is C2 Energy.
And we do have the operation and maintenance agreement with Maximum Solar. That is an active agreement.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And while we're, I'd like to introduce Jeff Morgan from Wheaton College.
Property owner.
Yes, the property owner, correct.
Then customer.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Okay, so the floor is mine and, but I was invited to come, but I don't, I was not provided an agenda or anything. People just asked me to come, so I'm, so you, I guess you guys ask questions and I'll answer because, or if you'd like, I could just give you a summary and then ask questions, so.
Well, let me.
You tell me where we're at.
A, not so much background, but what prompted our hope to get you all together is that the project obviously went through a pretty extensive hearing process. Commitments were made, expectations were raised, either justifiably or not, and there was, I think, a shared concern by both the Butters, members of the planning board, that not all the provisions were adhered to, or if they were adhered to, that was past tense and conditions had deteriorated to the point that, you know, some of the, the shrubs had died, some of the shrubs have, have been feasted upon by wildlife. There's been some concerns about maintenance of the shrubs that, that are there. There's a couple of other provisions in terms of a, the sum of money that was to be set aside for plantings for one of the Butters. There was an operations and maintenance surety that was to be applied to the, the project on an ongoing basis. So we just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page. And I know that in the last couple of days, there have been some, some improvements to the site in terms of dead trees being swapped out with new ones. But there was also some discussion of, of a couple of prior unknown wells that had been uncovered that, you know, posed a potential hazard to.
I can speak to the wells?
Sure.
During the course of the project, we did encounter two wells that were unknown prior to that. As a temporary solution, one of them was covered, but the cover was deteriorating a little bit. We had that replaced and as a temporary solution, we put a granite block over the other one that was just an open hole in the ground essentially, until we could get a contractor in there, which we did as soon as possible and we've had it filled in.
There's, there's one that's visible from Clap Street that's got a cement cover on it.
Yes.
What's the status? Is that cover over an open well?
I believe so, yeah. It's been, we've had the cover replaced. It's a, a safe cover, it's.
Yeah, it was a cover as of yesterday. Cement cover, but.
Well, it was, it was done back in the winter at some point, when we actually had it replaced.
When you say replaced, the cover was.
There was a cover on there, but it was, I questioned its structural integrity.
Okay, so that's.
So we had it replaced.
So that cement cover is, is the final resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, and the other well, I wasn't sure where that was. That was filled in?
That one was actually closer to the road and we've had that filled in.
Okay, so that's filled.
Yeah.
Is it, is there actually water in the other well that has the cement cover on it?
I'm not sure. I couldn't look underneath it, so.
Because I'm wondering why you didn't fill that in.
Um.
Kind of belts and suspenders.
I don't remember offhand why that one wasn't filled in, but instead we opted to have a precast concrete with a, like a manhole cover on it.
Okay.
The well that was filled in, what was it filled in with?
I believe it was filled in with gravel.
Gravel?
Yeah. Is that, is that?
Yeah, no, I'm just, again, the, I mean, it's a pretty hefty cover, but it's also, you know, pretty visible and subject to curiosity. It takes some effort to move it, but it probably could be moved.
Yeah.
So that. Just from a liability standpoint. I don't know that just letting it sit there, where it's so close and visible, is, is in your best interest or best interest of the neighborhood.
We can revisit it and look at, you know, the possibility of getting that one filled as well. I'm just regrading over, over the top of it.
All right, we can. Yes, Ms. Hayden?
So the well that we're talking about, that has handles on that cover, so it is, and you can see it from the street.
Right.
And there is water.
Okay. Sorry.
So the well, one of the wells that we're talking about, the one that has like the big manhole cover on it, it has handles on it and says gas. But, I mean, I don't think I could move it, but maybe a couple of kids could move it. There is water in it. The one that was at the street was filled in. I'm just very concerned that there may be others, because no one knew that was there. That one was very deep, right on the street, and had water in it. And my child almost fell in it. The one that we're talking about, that they put the cover on with the handles, from August of last year, I sent and contacted people on multiple occasions that that cover had been moved, and that there was an open well there. So that's where my concern is. Also, I think there were some concerns in the field with other wells that the contractors had found. There is a fence around that, and I'm not planning on allowing my children to hop the fence, but there are unmarked wells. I think it might have been a farm at one time, and-
I think it was, yeah.
You know, so I'm not saying that anyone knew they were there, but we know now that there are unmarked wells out in those fields, and there are some that were on the other side of the fence. And they did come out when they were told, you know, when they found out. Wheaton did come out and fill it, but the other one is not filled. And like I said, I think kids, I wouldn't want them to do it, but if they were curious enough, could potentially pull, pull that, because I think it's like, it has two handles right on it. I see it every time I drive by it, and everyone knows it's a well. So I think it would be best if it was filled in. And I just don't know how we know that there aren't any other, other wells there, especially with the amount of heavy trucks. I think that's why the, the well next to the street caved in and opened, was the amount of traffic that was being driven across, like, the lawn. Like I said, I don't think anyone did it on purpose, but I think it just, it happened to open that up. And I don't know if there are any other there, others there, and that was, like I said, so close to the street that when my child was walking home, and there was a funeral, she was walking on the grass and tripped over it. And when my neighbor said, "Oh, that's a well," she said, "Oh, it's a hole. I almost fell in," and we walked over. So it's, you know, hopefully, there aren't any others there. And like I said, with the amount of traffic and trucks that have been on that property, there could be other, could have compromised the, the ground. So, my opinion, if it means anything, is fill the well in.
Yeah, or a bare minimum. You've got machines in there, drop a load of material on it, so that it's both covered out of sight, in essence. If you're not gonna fill it, if, if there's a potential use for it, because one of the concerns too, we spoke to the gentleman pulling and replacing trees, is he could have used the water to irrigate those shrubs. So if there's going to be a use for that well, I understand it, but I think it's just, it, being out there so visible, it, it's tempting.
Yeah. We, we'll take another look at that. I, I don't remember offhand why, why that one was capped instead of filled. But I'll look into it and revisit that with my folks. I'm not aware of any other wells within the boundaries of the fence that, that you mentioned.
I just know that the contractor had said they had come across some in the field when they were erecting the solar panels. I don't know where they are specifically. Like I said, there is a fence, but I think it's just an old property, so those are the dangers of-
Yeah.
They're cutting an old property.
I'll circle back with them as well, and it may be the same wells that, that we're already aware of, that they're, that they were talking about. But I'll circle back with those guys and just make sure there aren't any more that we don't know about. You'd like me to just talk about the rest of it?
Please.
Let people ask questions?
Sure.
Just real quick on the last point regarding the wells, if there would just be some communication back you through Tabitha to the town of what was, you know, discovered on your next
Sure.
inspection of that well?
Okay.
And what the plan would be to address it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me talk real quick, just regarding this issue. My name's David Wolfert, and I'm the vice president of engineering with C2. I have a three-year-old. Completely understand where you're coming from. While you're doing your O and M, obviously, safety is our number one concern for anybody, either the people that are working on the site or the people in the community. So, if you do find anything, let us know immediately, and we will take care of it. Anything that could be harmful to any of your workers or anybody within the community.
Yeah, so after this meeting, I'm gonna call Jason Brown and the D and D. They were the two contractors out there and inquire, and we'll report back via Jeff at Wheaton. So we'll just have one source of communication regarding the wells. And anything else?
And you do realize that Brian Butler is not gonna sign off on any electrical connections until we clear up everything? That might be a safety concern. So that's what he's, we've talked about, the building inspector.
Right.
Okay.
That's fine. So, as far as I know, the wells have been addressed. It's the first I've ever heard of other wells. I've never seen them. I've been out there 50 times, but that doesn't mean that they don't exist. So, well, I'm gonna, D and D or Brown would know, because they, they've been out there for six months straight. So, anyway, we'll, we'll report back immediately on that. Plantings, so this is where I believe we're at. And people can correct me if I'm wrong. So we had an obligation to plant the plantings, which I believe we met that condition. And then there was a guarantee that the plants were gonna survive. We had five dead from nature, dead trees, which we replaced Monday. So those, and now there's, don't hold me to this number, because I don't know the number, but call it eight or 10 arborvitae's that, I forgot the word for it, but basically the deer ate them to this height. So they've been munched. I think they call it munching, but. So those, so our landscaper's not guaranteeing, but, you know, if you guys want those replaced, that's fine. That was the, what I call phase one of kind of what we promised. Phase two was to get the final financing. We said, "Listen, there's gotta be some definitive end in sight of where this plantings is going." So there was several negotiations back and forth, and I was not, my partner was here, I was not here. But I believe the end result was, and I'm making up the money, but I think it's $20,000, that we deposited, we paid for it. And said, "Here's the money. The town and the Butters can do whatever they want with it." And so you can pick whatever plants you want, you can hire whoever you want, and put the, put wherever you want. And that was the settlement we, we made.
Well, there was a letter, November 11th,
Yes.
2016, and you have a copy of it right there.
Okay.
So it outlines the plants that needed to be additional plantings?
Mm-hmm.
And then the extra $20,000 that you talked about?
Right.
That was supposed to be planted by Garth Dixon. It's, says it right here in the letter. So.
Right, but that was supposed to be between the town and Garth, and it-
We haven't even gotten there yet, because we still have one, two, three, and four, where trees were supposed to be made available. Do you want me to show you?
Uh, so, all right, so anyway, once, as far as I know, that's what I'm, where we're at. So
Sorry, you're saying-
I was never, I was just, I was not provided this till right now. No one gave this to me, so I'm not prepared to-
Yeah, there was a number of items there that were-
All right, so what items?
I've sent this letter to you several times.
Oh, okay, all right. So what, what items have we not met?
Number, so on page, the last page of this handout, on the last, on the back.
Okay.
Says additional tree planting will be performed by Garth Dixon. So this is where we had the conference call of it, ago?
Right.
And we talked about this?
Yes.
That the applicant being, I believe in this situation, it's Maximum Solar, you are representing the applicant to provide those trees.
Right, so it was my understanding that we, that was why we paid the $20,000 and that the-
No.
No. This is from the planning board, November, I mean, we have shared this with you several times, so.
Okay, so it's, okay, so, and then did Garth, so Garth was gonna get back to you with a list of trees? Did he, did he?
Garth and I talked about the trees that, those, for those number two, three, and four there that could be made available. We talked about hemlocks. And from what I understand, then, then you followed up with me and said that you'd like to stay out of it. And that's when we brought it back up to the planning board to talk through this discussion.
Okay, so, I'm fine. So I just wanna make sure, the reason I wanna stay out is because I just want, if it's $20,000, I don't care how it's spent.
No, we're confusing a couple things. The $20,000 is, is specifically for screening for the Hayden's. Let, let's set that-
Number five on the list is the $20,000.
Number five.
Let's, let's set that aside. These, these two, three, and four are plantings that are part of your commitment that have nothing to do with the $20,000.
They're in addition to the $20,000.
Right. They come before that, essentially. And when we spoke on the phone-
Let me adjust that.
Yeah, if it, if this is, I gotta talk to Henry, but if that's what we owe, that's what we owe. It's, yeah, so. I, that was not what I was, so anyway, that's not what I thought, but.
But at least, that, regardless of what you thought, at least you're understanding where we're coming from. I'm not asking you to, to agree.
Yeah, and I'm, it is, whatever it is, it is. So I'm gonna do it. Unfortunately, you know, forgive my ignorance, but this was my partner. He was handling this, and I just kinda got latched into it, and so now I feel like an idiot. But, so one through four, I'm just gonna talk to Henry tonight, and that's, if that's what it is, that's what it is. So, and we'll do it. Obviously, we're gonna fulfill our obligations immediately.
Okay.
Can you please state for the record, then, that you will fulfill numbers two through four on this list?
Once I talk to Henry and he tells me that's what we owe, then yes, I will. But I, I have to, I'd-
See, I'm getting different answers outside of these-
You're, you're gonna hear from me immediately. I'm taking complete control of this tonight, and it will be resolved immediately. So this isn't gonna like drag on. So, I'm, I'm not gonna commit to anything tonight, but by tomorrow morning, you'll know 100%. I'll say yes, yes, and yes. I'm 99% sure I will, if that's what we promised.
Well, and again, how do I put this, so that, you know, no one wants, anyone dragged through the coals. You folks, as I say, collectively agreed to a number of things.
Mm-hmm.
Whether you should have agreed to them or not is immaterial to me. At this point, they were agreed to.
I agree completely.
And I, for one, and I, I'm one of seven votes, will not direct, will, will not direct the building inspector as our zoning enforcement officer to authorize mass electric to make the connection if these commitments aren't adhered to. I mean, I can't be any more clear than that.
Yeah, and we have 100%, whatever we're obligated to do, which I, again, tomorrow morning, I just don't wanna, I just have to talk to my partner.
Understood.
But yes, I understand what you're saying.
And, and for me, it's, it's less an obligation than it is a commitment. A commitment was made.
I, and I fully intend to adhere to the commitments made, 100%.
So that as long as we understand that we're looking for numbers two, three, and four, the 20, the number five has, I understand, has already been deposited.
The money is in there, but there have been no, we haven't had the meeting to discuss if that money's going straight to the Hayden's, if we're developing a planting plan. I believe Garth Dixon is not going to be working on that piece, but I haven't been given a clear answer.
Yeah, that, that's less of a concern. If the money is there, then, then we can work out
Yes.
how that's gonna-
So, just so I understand, I just wanna make sure what you guys are thinking. One through four, we owe regardless of the 20. That has nothing to do with the 20.
Correct.
The 20, once I do one through four and everyone's happy, am I involved with five?
I mean, if you want-
What's your understanding?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, it, I don't know that we're, we're concerned as to who does it. The money is there. We'll talk to the Hayden's, because that's what this was set up for. If they have someone that they're more comfortable with, or Garth wants to do it and submit a price, you know.
Okay. What I'm, yeah, I'm just saying is, my obligations, do I have any obligations with number five?
No.
Because if I don't-
The applicant will not be involved in the planning.
Okay, yeah, that, so that's what, okay, so that was my misunderstanding. So I'm sure, the answer is, we'll take care of one through four, and we're gonna replace those munched arborvitae's.
Thank you.
But the munched arborvitae's, what should I replace them with? Since my engineer and landscaper-
Talked about understory shrubs that would help screen the bottom.
So just leave those and put an understory?
Let's just replace those with a non-arborvitae.
White pines or something?
Well, there was, there's something else out there.
Hemlocks.
Spruces, hemlocks.
I'm not a-
Okay, I will find out something that deer don't look like, you know, but I'll-
We talked about hemlocks.
Yeah, hemlocks. So I'm just gonna, before I go do it, I'll just say, "Hey, does this seem good to you?"
Yeah, there's some stuff out there that
Get your blessing on it.
has survived and apparently aren't tasty to deer.
Okay.
Whatever those were, I don't know what they are.
So let's just forget the thing that I said about talking to my partner. We'll handle our obligations immediately. And I will report back.
Okay.
Okay, and just to clarify, I mean, read specifically on each of those items, because there's plantings at the discretion of the actual homeowners.
Yes.
So there needs to be some communication. Don't just have somebody show up and drop a tree somewhere and think
Yes.
that's gonna satisfy it.
Yes.
So there's some specific requirements of each of these items.
Yeah, thank you.
And-
Yes, I'm gonna study them and memorize them tonight, and call, call the appropriate Butters and submit a plan to them, have them sign off on it, and then do the installation.
We would appreciate that. And just to advise you, if this is the first time you're seeing some of this language, this was supposed to be done immediately, and that was immediately meant November of last year, or in the spring of 2017. And we're now in the summer of 2017, so this needs to be done quickly.
Yes, thank you. It behooves me to get it done. So we're, we're in a, you're a motivated guy here.
I believe it would, thank you.
Yes. Okay.
And if, Mr. Morgan, if you could get back to us on what your plan is with that, that capped well, yeah, whether you're gonna-
I'll also look into the, whether or not there are any additional wells other than two, like that one.
Yes.
So the, just Hayden, while we have you here, one through four, you're not on, part of one through four, it's just, it's Wickers and the Cummings, is that correct?
Mr. Cummings.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mr. Cummings, you had something you wanted to-
I just was, um, before you, so I have your contact information. You, we'll talk to him later.
Thank you.
Bruce Cummings, 37, Clap Street. Since the, I guess I'm asking about the communication. Since there's been changes in that, Janice and Kevin had forwarded a couple emails, but I've not been constantly updated. I don't know if it's my responsibility to come and knock, but given where we just talked about, how is that communication gonna be really structured? We talked about a timeframe slipping and this type of thing, and just, so how can we work better to really facilitate communication when this is happening?
Just-
If it's, if we have any questions and that type. Like, for the letter, can I have a copy of the letter?
Sure.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Certainly.
What I would propose to do is, all my correspondents will have you on every email, as just, you'll be in the chain. So we'll have Tabitha, myself, and this Wickers, and Garth, and you'll be copied on all of it, if you wanna chime in at any point, or if we have questions.
We've done that before, so I know it does work in spots.
So, just so we're not replowing old ground, as it pertains to Mr. Cummings, the only obligation the, the applicant, the project owner has is to provide you with three trees that will be planted at your discretion. So the communication, there's two pieces of communication that need to happen, is between the two of you as to what trees you want and where you want them, and then from you, that they've been planted, so that number four is satisfied. Again, I don't wanna re-
Okay, so if you wanna pick three trees, and then the deal would be, would have Garth, and you, I'd set it all up and say, hey, let's meet at one of, whatever time of your choosing, you'd meet him here and say, "Plant these trees here, here and there," and he'll plant them.
And you all just keep me in the loop, so that I'm-
Yeah, everyone will be in the loop. Everyone will be in the loop.
Right. And again, just to make sure I understand, it has to be done on a timeframe, so that, right? What I'm saying is, is during the fall, things change rapidly from right now to that. And when we looked at where the trees were, it was with Garth, it was late fall, and he stood right on my front doorstep, and we could see- fall, and he stood right on my front doorstep, and we could see a direct line. So, you want this to take place within the next couple of weeks, is that what we're talking about?
Well, it's, the sooner the better, because he wants to get connected, and that's not gonna happen as far as I'm concerned until these things are met. So, there is an incentive for him, and again, to put a parameter on this, we're talking about three trees.
Three trees, and I can put them on my property, is that correct?
Correct.
Anywhere but in the middle of Clap Street.
At your discretion.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're gonna do the same for this Wickers.
Correct.
Correct, and I have been in contact with them.
So, I think we're all on the same page.
I think, one thing that I might suggest, I think, I think that, given your concerns about potential wells, is there a communication channel that exists in terms of, if you know it's unsafe conditions, who should be, who should be telling to get that fixed most efficiently?
I've communicated to many people, and the first time I communicated about a well was August. It was filled in in December, so I don't know.
I'm not sure who should be-
That's what I'm saying. I already showed to many people so much.
Who should be or what, phone calling, you know, to do that.
Yep, I'm concerned in terms of going forward, whatever may or may not, and again, we can't talk about wells we don't know about.
Yeah.
But-
If we do know about one.
But my, my assumption, and it's just an assumption, if in fact there are any other wells that are inside the fence, but we don't know that for sure, but the two that we do know outside of the fence, one's been filled, and the other's been covered, a little concerned with the one that's covered because that can be uncovered. So, we'll wait to hear from you as to how you plan on addressing that, whether you're gonna fill it. Should've spoken to Mr. Burton and got one of his huge rocks and put that on top of-
I know, I wish I had met him before tonight.
But whatever, you know, whatever you think you're going to do, we'd like to hear about it, so that we can wrap this up, but it is a concern.
And going forward, is the property, Wheaton College being the property owner, you probably don't have my contact information, but you can, I'll make sure you get it, and you can reach out to me directly, where there's any safety concerns or anything like that, you know, anything solar related, specific to that, I can't help that much, but if there's a well on our land, I want to know about it so that we can address it right away.
Okay.
So, Jeff, just, any property concerns with that land would be directed to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wheaton College owns the property, so obviously if there's a safety concern, we want to know about it.
For the what?
Okay, thank you.
In fact, Mrs. Hayden, I think I met you in December, when I found out about the wells, and we had them filled in.
That day.
Yeah, so, so going forward, anything like that, feel free to call me directly, and I'll get you my contact information.
The part that I was concerned about though, is how many days it took for me to get someone out there.
Right, I hadn't been aware of it prior to that.
I know that, I'm just saying, that's where I get concerned, is I did reach out, and then I, you know, just, I was, we saw the well, that was very deep, and had a lot of-
It was scary, yeah, no, I-
As a parent.
I have a four-year-old, and-
Being ignored for a while about that.
Yeah.
And then being called unreasonable was a problem.
I didn't call anyone reasonable.
You didn't call me unreasonable, no. But I'm just saying, in general, with this project, when I'd raise concerns, I'd, well, I'd say, you know.
We can't hear you when you talk.
Hopefully, we've-
Well, anything like that, you can call me, and we'll be happy to get together and address it right away. Thank you.
One other question from Mr. Chapman. The, the ongoing maintenance of the landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the, and I don't know what this stuff is, but between the Hayden's and the fence, their shrubs, they're doing well, but they're being surrounded by-
Not weed and bittersweet and all that stuff that we don't-
Whatever it is, which, I suppose for the moment, serves a purpose in screening, but if they're gonna choke out and kill the plantings, then come fall, when those weeds die back, you've got another issue. What's your plan going forward? There's also behind 36 Clap Street, there were some plants, plant, or some shrubs planted, but it doesn't look like anyone's taking care of that, and that's starting to get infilled with weeds. I guess what I'd like to know is, you know, what do you, I'm not looking for a gardener to be out there, but it seems counterproductive to plant all this stuff, only to have them die out in two or three years because they've been overtaken, so.
Right, so I guess the answer to that is, I no longer, and I'm, I don't want to seem like I'm failing, what I'm doing is, I'm saying, I don't have the authority to speak. David, they're the owners of the project, so in the operations and maintenance agreement you have, that, those are my obligations to do, and so I guess, anything beyond that that's not there, I could, you know, I could tell you anything, but the truth is, I don't own the project anymore, so you'd have to ask David that question.
All right, but maximum solar, I thought you told me, was responsible for the operation of what?
The operation, elect, first of all, everything electrical, and then we're responsible for mowing everything inside the fence and plowing.
Inside, who's responsible for outside?
And then, I'd have to, I'd have to read the agreement, but as far as I know, it was, was just whatever's in the agreement is what I'm responsible for.
Vegetation inside the program.
All right, good. Again, it's, it's counterproductive to plant all this stuff, and I'm sure at a, a good out-of-pocket cost to you folks, before you sold it, only to have it overtaken, so I guess what I'd like to hear from someone is, who's gonna maintain this so that trees-
I will review the O&M agreement when I get back into the office, and obviously, you're doing us a favor by telling us this, we don't, I have to start replanting stuff all the time, so, yes, we need to take care of that, we need to address it. It will likely be with you, since you're going to be doing the O&M inside, I'd rather have you doing it on the outside as well, if you're gonna be out there anymore, but we'll have to discuss that.
So, like for 10 years, they're on the hook for trees.
All right, so that's, if you will, a report back from somebody, in terms of the maintenance of the shrubs, status of the well, timeframe for the, or completion of the items two, three, and four. So, those are the three things that I think we're looking for. We covered?
Yeah. So, I do would expect to follow up with you about the plantings for the 20,000, and did you want to say something about that?
Sure, I'm just writing down all this, don't forget it.
So, you guys mentioned the arborvitae's. I counted on just my side, about 36 of them, every single arborvitae was eaten, but there are plantings there that did survive the deer, so my suggestion would be, use those and remove the arborvitae's, because they're just, they're gone. The tops are there, but you're gonna see through it into the solar farm.
Yeah.
So, even if you, so I don't know if shrubs would, would be the best for all of it, but I think-
No, that's not what we're talking about.
Well-
Well, you had mentioned planting shrubs in front of them, but the, and he mentioned that there were eight that were browse, so-
I think we're mixing, mixing that idea.
Okay, there were more than eight arborvitae's that have been browse by deer.
Yeah, those are, but by the same token, some of that stuff, the survivors are growing into where the arborvitae's were. I think the arborvitae's we're talking about replacing, the ones in the front that are pretty much in your face, those are the ones that I think we'd like to see replaced with anything but arborvitae. And, you know, shame on me, I've relied on, Joanne was a stickler for no arborvitae's, I don't know how this got past us, on the, on the plan that said TP, I have no idea what TP is, but apparently that's the Latin for-
When I come home from work every night, there's like 10 deer out there-
Oh, yeah.
-eating them, like, they're just having a party.
I just do want to make clear then, you're talking about the arborvitae in the back, not the ones in the front.
There are some arborvitae's in the front, and then there's some along the side, like where Bruce's house is, they're planted along-
The 36 you're talking about.
Yeah, I didn't go on to where Mrs. Farquhar lives, because she doesn't really know me, and I thought she might not appreciate me walking through her property, so I just like kinda looked where we are. But there were quite a few. Some of the other trees that were nibbled, they have growth on them, but the arborvitae's really didn't.
I mean, they're talking about-
And some of them now look almost okay because the weeds are growing through them.
Yeah, the stuff that, the stuff that, at least what I saw, the stuff between your property and, some of it's been munched on, but by the same token, a lot of the other stuff has survived-
Some of it's quite through.
And it's growing in, so like, to the extent that the plan was to block-
The worst part of it is past me and more along where Bruce is, but now there's about this, the weeds are about this tall, so you now-
When you say Bruce, going further up Clap Street?
Yes, towards like, towards Jane's house.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes, yes.
Right, and those are the ones that are in the front that, that, you know, are gonna be replaced.
And then there are some though on the front, if you were to look, if you were to stand at the funeral home, there were a couple in that front section that are-
Right, those are the ones that we're talking about, replacing with something less tasty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're good?
Okay, we're on it.
Okay.
If I, if I may ask, before you, while we have you gentlemen, just for maybe for my knowledge of the rest of the board, what, what is the current status of this project in terms of any additional work still needed inside the fence with the equipment? Is that all ready to go once these-
Sure.
-qualifications are met? You know, this was originally gonna be energized before the end of the year last year-
Yes.
And that hasn't happened, so I don't know what remains from that aspect.
Sure, why don't I give you a quick little update?
Yeah, if everybody's okay with that, yeah.
As far as, yeah, we were pretty much electrically, forget the site work for now, done by January 8th. There was some minor little detail work, inspections and, you know, punch list items, but it was, it could've been energized then. So, we've been waiting for National Grid since January 8th. The site guy was 95% done and took till today to get his last 5% done. So, in his mind, he's done, but he's gonna reach out to, he probably, he should've already done that, I don't know if it's happened, but to Concom to request an inspection, like kind of a pre, and before we, I know we still have this to do, but for her to walk the site and, you know, come up with a punch list of her own, but he's, in his mind, he's done. He says, you know, hey, they always have one or two things they might want me to tweak, but in his mind, he's done. So, besides what we talked about tonight, we feel like we're done and just waiting for National Grid. I drove by there tonight, it appears all the poles are in, it looks like 95% of the cabling, or the line, power lines are in, they just haven't made the final interconnect. But I did see there's some temporary hardware that needs to be, but they look like they're close, but they don't answer emails, they don't answer phone calls, it's impossible.
And, and-
So-
Only because I've seen this happen, and I, for warrants is for our, National Grid will call you up and say, we're ready to go, and they're gonna call a town hall and ask for an SRE, and that's not gonna happen if this isn't done. And again, that's not a threat, I just-
No, I appreciate it.
As soon as this is gonna come up tomorrow, I will not vote to, to release that if these things aren't done. I hate to get hard on you, but I just-
No, 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 I'm glad, I'm glad, I have zero problem with that, zero problem. I'd be doing the same thing if I, I owe it, we're gonna do it. That's all there is to it, it's no problem.
One question, there's a couple racks that don't have panels on them?
Yes.
Will they stay like that, or?
Uh, yeah, there's a certain amount of strings, I forgot which one these are, but they'll, like, I'm making this up, but 18 panels that are strung together, modules, and then you end up having like an open spot on a rack, just because there's, that's just the way it is, the way the math worked on the drawing. So, yes, so all the modules have been installed per plans and specs, and so it's an open-
The finished racks, are they coming down? Are you gonna take them?
Oh, the, oh, there's some extra racking, yes, I called D and D, they said, hey, what do you want to do with this? I said, I don't want it, you can either have it or dispose it, so that's, that's, and C2 Energy, that was on their punch list too, so that's definitely leaving.
Great.
And we have, we've got, they still owe, we owe them money, so that's, that won't get, it's a final punch list fund, so they're motivated to get rid of that, but yes. And I am gonna report, I'm gonna ask D and D and Brown about the wells, and we'll, I'll communicate that with Jeff, so there's one point of contact for that, but we're gonna find out if there's anything else.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, you guys.
All right. So, we can go back to general business. Larson Farms.
So, Larson Farms, Autumn Lane, Jay Zola and Keith. So, Keith and I went out, took a look, so you'll see there's a spreadsheet, thank you everyone, that's updated from our last discussion, that shows the money that was requested to release, which was $10,494, and what's left remaining, which is, they still need to do the Cape Cod burn to keep the gravel in the roundabout, the wearing course, the top coat on the road. So, Keith said, if we can hold back 2,000 just in case, that way we have enough if we need to pave the road, and he's happy with you releasing 8,000, 494. And that's what the email is too.
The only Cape Cod burn they're gonna do is around the circle?
Around the circle.
Because that's filled with peystone now?
Yeah.
And it's going all over the place.
I know, they haven't finished it.
Okay. Any further questions, or?
And Keith says 2,000's enough?
Yep, we talked, and he, their email here says, please release 8,000 to Jay Zola.
Okay, that's from Keith. Before we put over it?
That's from Keith.
Hmm?
The email from Keith is on the back.
Also, email from nationally.
Well, yeah.
With Keith, okay, got it.
Not everyone emails in our office.
Yeah, okay.
All right, is there a motion to release $8,494.35?
So, move the motion.
Was there any questions? I'm sorry.
No.
We make the motion there?
Yes.
Ed made the motion, is there a second? I seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Second was Tim.
Second was Frank.
Second was Frank. You want? I'll take it.
Okay.
My report, I guess.
Your report.
So, B, my report, current applications, we just talked to David Cohen about the first one on there, for Garrett Shops to O'Reilly Auto Parts. We have some upcoming special permit site plan reviews, and that would be Lopes Drive, the permits have expired for Lopes Drive on their site plan review and special permit, so they're putting together a new application and plans that to come back before us, and I think they'll probably be aiming for the meeting following the next one, because we would have to notice.
I'm sorry, but-
What was Lopes Drive?
Lopes Drive?
Lopes, I'm sorry, yeah, it was a special permit for hazardous materials, and they had a 10,000, industrial use of 10,000 square feet.
Yeah.
I think, and the site plan review for that, they both expired a couple of years ago.
So, the work wasn't done?
No, they haven't done anything yet, so they wanted to come in, and they talked to me about extensions, I said, you're too late for the extensions, because they're way past the deadlines.
Okay.
So, they're putting in a new one. And then the other one was something we talked about briefly before some folks came in, and that is that Condyne's coming with a new construction of approximately 130,000 square feet on South Washington in the Commerce Way area, so they're calling that Commerce And then the other one was something we talked about briefly before some folks came in, and that is that Condyne's coming with a new construction of approximately 130,000 square feet on South Washington in the Commerce Way area, so they're calling that Commerce Way, but it's not technically on that street. So we are having a pre-application meeting with them this week, and they hope to get in soon as well, so probably the meeting after next.
Do they have a tenant, or is this on speculation?
Oh, um, steer manufact, Sterns Manufacturing, I believe.
Okay, and that's within the Commerce Center, or is that outside of, across the, across the street?
Yeah, across the street.
Okay.
Next to Plantation Park.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And there's quite a bit of wetlands issues there, so there's going to be some maneuvering.
Okay.
And then, active construction administration, so we talked about surety releases, and we've sold, we'll skip those, Leonard Street, we met with Condyne this week, and we're talking about partnering for state funding opportunities to help that project along water and sewer connections, we're looking at a EDA grant, which is the Economic Development Administration, and that's through SERPED, the Regional Planning Agency, they helped us put that together as a technical assistance to us as a municipality. So that could bring in some good money, and then we're also looking at MassWorks funding for infrastructure improvements and potentially phasing the product, project, so that that funding opportunity, we'd be in line with that. So we're, there's a lot of discussion going on beyond the scenes about private-public partnerships and working with Mast dot as well to get the water sewer around, across 495.
And there was a 25% design meeting with Mast dot for the...
Yeah, so there's a flyer here.
And I assume Condyne is, is participating in that.
Yes, yes, we're all coordinating with them quite a bit. So there's a 25% design hearing on Tuesday, July 18th, I put that in here. They're actually more at like, a little further down, but this is a hearing that's required at this stage, so that's a public meeting, and the public is welcome.
Are there any requirements of posting or notification for public on this one? The butters and all that?
The butters will be noticed, Mast dot's doing all that, so I think it's on the sign out front.
Okay, just to be sure we're covering the bases of the butters. Thank you.
New England Ice Cream Pond Modification Plans got delayed a bit because of wet weather, but they're working with field changes on those, so I've been coordinating with the peer reviewer.
Is, is New England Ice Cream, but there's that open gap along 140 that you see in front of the building, is that, what is the final plan for that? Do we know? It was kind of cleared out when I think they made their, their electrical connections or whatever through that space, I just don't know what the long-term...
I know they're talking about coming in for extend, extension, or expansion, sorry, so...
So, yeah, good.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
We could find out.
Yeah.
Just other planning news, complete streets policy, so there's a couple things, recreational marijuana and complete streets. We are looking at potentially having joint meetings between us and the Board of Selectmen to, we have to have a public meeting around complete streets to kind of kick off the project, give people information on what it is, why we're doing it, and the Board of Selectmen should be involved in that as well. And for recreational marijuana, the Board of Selectmen met and are considering putting an article to ban or declare a moratorium, but they're seeking a joint meeting as well. So I wanted to talk to you all about when, a window for that, because, you know, August is tough to schedule, maybe September, and if we were to do something, I know it's tough to get you guys together, so...
Did the Board of Selectmen have any recommendations on a meeting time, they just, just more of a request to...
I've copied and pasted what they said.
Okay.
So, they suggested the two boards hold a joint meeting. All that been told.
The only concern I have, wait until September, we're talking about acting at the October special town, or annual town meeting.
That's a good point.
Right now, there are too many moving parts to this thing, I mean, as you probably know, the House passed one, Version Senate passed another, they're in conference, they can't decide by whatever it is, next Monday, or whatever the, the 1st of July is, then the original petition legislation is in, is in play. We don't even know what it is that we're dealing with, but I think at bare minimum, and, you know, Copeland has one, we can grab one from somebody, that, you know, we, we sponsor, if the Selectmen aren't going to, a moratorium, because again, I'm not casting any value judgments on whether we should have marijuana or not, but we, at least I don't know how we're going to do it, if we're going to do it. And because there were so many, many moving parts, I think we have to have a moratorium on the warrant, and I'd just let the Selectmen know that if they don't, we're going to, I assume, with the vote of the board, propose a moratorium till, you know, next June, or June 30th.
You want to draft, do you want me to draft a letter from all of that?
Yeah, I mean, if they've got, if they've got some, uh, plan already to go, I'd be glad to hear it, my sense is, I don't want to be sitting, you know, saying, thinking that Board of Selectmen's going to do something, they may be thinking, we're going to do something, only to find out we've missed the opportunity to catch the town meeting, so...
Yeah, if we have, I mean, we need to make sure we all have clarity as to the deadline of getting a warrant, you know, getting on the warrant for the town, if that's 60 days in advance of, then that puts us into...
It's in August.
August, you know, so if there's, however we get there, if it's us drafting something, if we have a joint meeting, that's going to have to happen, it's in July, I would think.
You know, I don't know that the Selectmen are prepared to actually write a bylaw dealing with marijuana, because it's, again, in flux. Right.
Right.
So I think the only option we have is a moratorium, and I really, I have no pride of authorship if they want to sponsor it, or it's going to come from, I assume, Copeland and Page, who already gave us a sample, or we can borrow from others, other communities that are passing it, but, you know, just, if you let them know that if they don't, we will sponsor a...
Sure, I'll draft a letter, I think that's a prudent course of action. So then the complete streets can be September, though, that's not a real rush. I think that's more of an informational meeting anyway. That's pretty much it, other than Mast dot Annual Conference, I gave everybody that a few times.
We have minutes of May 16th and June 13th.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 16th, 2017?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of approving May 16th?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions?
On the June 13th minutes, page three, section four, three, four, five, six, seven, seventh line down, there's, there's a line that says, Mr. Beatty commented, there is a series of white pines that have died on the property. Not sure if that just should be reworded to...
Serious?
Serious?
There is a ser, series of white pines, if that's what that was intended to be, I couldn't recall the specific language, but just the wording is a bit off there. So I'm fine if it's a series of white pines. And then Mr. Zwic, Mr. Zwicker, two lines below that.
Oh, Mr. Zwicker, yeah.
Mr. Zwicker, ER.
Guess I recruited you for helping with that document, you know.
So I'll move to approve the June 13th, 2017, meeting minutes with the amended changes.
Second.
Further discussion, or corrections, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the June 13th minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
The only thing that the header has, May 2nd, for whatever reason. Okay. Looks like the last item is approval of bills and warrants, we have...
Do you want this signed?
We're going to approve the first one. We have total budget costs of $3,764.89, and we have peer review out of the review account of $656.25, for a total of $4,421.14. If there are none, entertain a motion to approve the bills and warrants.
Some, second.
It was, I think there was a...
Simultaneous, Tim and then...
We square as to who's, who's, all right, there's going to...
As Kaylee is, yeah, you got it.
You're good?
One, two.
Pick one.
All right. We've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Benches. That's it. Any, any other items to be brought up tonight? I will not be here at the July 11th meeting. Right now, we have nothing scheduled.
Right, so given that we're, the noticing would have to be out already, so we, the only thing we have going on is the, O'Reilly, if he comes in at that meeting.
Doesn't sound like he's going to be ready, he won't know till next Monday.
He'll know Monday, and hopefully he knows Monday.
Mary Jo Estates is supposed to come back for an extension by July 23rd, they're coming in to chat with us about some other things, so, but I haven't put them on any agenda.
What's, what's the significance of July 23rd?
Their extension that you guys granted.
All right, so we'll have to, because there's the 11th and then the 25th.
The 25th are the scheduled.
So they would have to be here on the 11th.
Yeah, they would.
I can't make the 11th either.
I mean, I'm going to guess they're going to come in for another extension, but they may have something else on their sleeve, I'm talking to them on Thursday, so...
All right, well, we're down two people. But it looks like that has to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, that's not, that's a subdivision?
Another extension, right?
Yes, so I think that's okay with just a quorum, so we have.
For the seven member board, is it need five for a special perimeter?
Right, super majority, we need five, simple majority is four.
So we're okay.
And I should know this, and it depends who you ask, remember, we're a body of seven.
I believe you need five for a super majority.
Well, that's, that's not where I was going, we need four for a quorum. Do you need, I believe you simply need three for positive action of, because you've got a quorum, you don't need the four. I've heard different opinions on it, that is to say, we know out of seven, you need four, you only need four for quorum. I believe you only need three out of the four to pass simple business, not four.
That's how I understand it too, Joe, if you have, even a board of five, if you only have three at a meeting, you can hold a meeting, and if the vote's two to one, it still passes, so that's how I understand it too. Might be good to double check.
Yeah, I can double check, but it sounds right to me.
What do you get when you ask two different lawyers the same question? Three different answers.
I won't ask for monit.
Okay, I guess the only other motion to entertain is one to adjourn.
Second.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'll just let you know, I won't be sending out my weekly, I'll be out.